So pursuant to Governor Baker's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, and imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place due to the outbreak of COVID-19, this meeting of the Town of Berlin Select Board will be conducted via remote participation. The town will post an audio or video recording or proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting on the town's webpage, the town's YouTube channel, and approval minutes will be posted to mytowngovernment.org. How's that? Is that short enough?
Good.
That's great.
They told me to shorten it up.
Next week is like ditto.
Yeah.
From last week.
What I said last week.
That's right.
Right.
It said every, every week for a year, so.
I know. So we can call the meeting to order at 7 o'clock. We've got approval of the March 15th, open session meeting minutes. Comments, questions, motions?
Move to approve.
Move to second.
Okay, then let's take a vote. Keith, aye.
Stone aye.
Hawkins aye.
That's unanimous. And I think we have some correspondence, Margaret?
Yes. The first is just a follow-up on the Centennial Beach correspondence to Hudson. I did email the recreation director with the, you know, conveying the comments that were submitted to the board from the resident. He acknowledged receipt of this request today that they give consideration to, to Berlin residents to continue to use Centennial Beach this summer for swimming lessons and for cooling off on hot summer days. So they've got that. And then we also received a request. Peter Hoffman submitted a request. The state has just recently allowed cities and towns to opt out of the mosquito control, mosquito management program. Peter asks on behalf of Berlin's beekeepers if the select board would give any consideration to opting out of the mosquito spraying starting in FY '22. In order to do that, the town would need to submit an alternative mosquito management plan. So that's something to consider, but I wanted to bring it to the board's attention well ahead of FY '22.
Can I, can I ask you a question, Margaret?
Sure.
I think already residents can opt out for their property. And I don't know, I don't know how people in town feel about opting out the whole town.
Okay, um, nor do I. We, we just got this request and this would be an entire town opt out. And so we'd need to have a, an alternative mosquito management plan.
What kind of plan would that be?
Well, just, I have, I have no idea. I think we'd have to get someone in who knows about these types of things in order to develop a plan. I can say that we pay $38,000, or next year we'll be paying $38,576 to the Central Mass mosquito control project from cherry sheet assessments. So there is a cost that we pay to belong. I don't know whether that cost could be shifted to an alternative program. I just don't know enough about it at this point.
Okay.
Yeah, Chris, I, I think that individuals can opt out. You just put up a sign, I don't know, dimensions where it needs to be. And the people who come in and spray, they look for the sign, so they'll stop. And then they go so far afterwards, because obviously we want to, you know, protect our beekeeper people. Those are important people, but yeah, I'm concerned about all the town saying no.
And another virus that you can get from mosquitoes.
But I think that's for the road spray, for the aerial spraying, it's harder to opt out of a single property just because, you know, you're from a plane, even if it's only several hundred feet up, it's still going to drift.
Yeah.
Okay, so I just wanted to bring that to the board's attention. And I know respond that residents do have the ability to opt out. I'll get more, maybe we, that's something we could post on our, on our website or more broadly. So, so people know they can do that.
Okay.
I wonder if the, if the, if the ag commission could be asked some of their opinions, because, you know, because there is all the outdoor farm work and the potential of getting diseases and the horse farms where they can pick some stuff up and where they feel the balance is between that and protecting the bees, which are also just as important to all the farms we have too.
Yeah. Do you want to bring up, let Eloise ask a question?
Yeah. Okay, Eloise, you can, okay, she's, all right.
The way the system works is if you do not want your property sprayed, you're supposed to tell the town clerk. They come in, ask me once a year, usually in the spring. But now that they have emailed, chances are you can email them directly. But I would also suggest that they CC me, just so I have it in my records.
Okay.
And I believe they do spray, but they spray when it's dark. They take into account the bees, so they don't spray until like an hour after it's dark.
Oh, I see.
Like it goes by my house around eight or nine o'clock.
Okay.
And I don't like it in my, so I make sure the windows are closed.
And is it, do you, do we have a specific day in Berlin when they do?
Usually Mondays.
That's what I thought. Okay. All right. Thank you, Eloise.
Thank you.
Yeah. So how are we going to get that message out to folks in, in town? And who, who has, does, does any one of those have agriculture or a committee?
Scott, there you go, Scott. Boom, chaka laka.
I attended their last meeting. I enjoyed it.
So once we have something, we could probably put it up on our website and then share it.
Yep.
Okay. Well, let us know what you find out from the ag commission.
I'll, I'll take ownership of sending them an email, asking to put it on their agenda. I'll CC you, Margaret, when I do.
Thanks, Scott.
Okay. We're moving on to general public comment. And I don't see any hands raised.
Nope.
Okay. Then we'll move on again to our general department update, which is the treasurer. Treasurer collector.
He's, he's being promoted now. I have got to, I'm going to disappear for a moment.
Dennis is still on.
Wait, Dennis? Dennis?
He's in the Twilight Zone.
No.
There he is. I hear him. Dennis, you there?
Yeah, I'm there.
All right.
All right.
My face, Margaret, because there's no picture and I'm at the town hall.
You're at the town hall. Did you click on your, your video thing at the bottom left of your screen?
It showed up.
There you go. There you are. You're going to come up, I think. There you are.
Hi, everybody.
Hey, Dennis.
In general, there's a lot going on. I thought I'd bring you up to date on the taxes. The big drop for the automobile excise tax went out in February. And today is the last day that the folks have to pay on time. There's a one-day grace period allowed by law. And as of Wednesday, we will add the demand, which is that $15 fee that people love. And folks will have two weeks to pay. We have a batch to go, but I think we're up at the 80%, 85% collection level. On real, if you don't have any questions on that, on real estate, we have pre-printed the invoices for the second half, six point something million dollars. And I'm just waiting for an insert before we start stuffing. They will be due on May 3rd, because it falls on the weekend and we have to move it to office hours. And there are some concerns. The second half, the auto, I don't worry about too much because everybody knows that if they don't pay, when I turn it over to the deputy collector, they're going to pay, or they don't get a license, they don't get. So there's kind of a, a plan. On the real estate, I'm really concerned about Sears. Solomon Pond Mall itself still hasn't paid their personal property tax. They paid the first half building, real estate tax. And we also have River Bridge Hotel, which is about a third to a fourth, I'm sorry, a third to a half of what's owed right now. That's passed through from the first half. They owe $117,000 plus a couple other smaller ones that add another 12 or so thousand to what they owe. And when the invoices go out, they're going to be in the 200 and somewhat thousand, which is a pretty good chunk. So I'm a little concerned about them. The golf course is the third largest one that hasn't paid, but they are on a payment plan. He'll start paying as soon as spring comes. And he's been pretty good the last three or four years delivering on that promise. But it could be put into tax title if we get any indication of real financial problems down there. Because you want to protect the lien. The personal property, the big one is the SOLOF folks that they don't want to pay, but because the law reads kind of in a fuzzy way, if you pay half of what you owe, then we have to put our collection effort on hold. So they paid half of their $44,000 first half and they'll owe 44 on the second. So, you know, 66 or whatever total dollars, I can't go after. And because it's personal property, there's no lien. And the only thing that the treasurer or the town can do is go to court. I can't attach it. There's no lien I can put on the property and take it to make up for the lost taxes. And it's not like auto where you can, you know, hey, you don't drive if you don't pay. And that's it on this.
Is that the new solar farm where we, we said they couldn't connect to the electrical grid until they paid?
Correct.
Margaret, did you have something you want to add?
New information, well, there's new information on that. Well, first of all, to add to what Dennis said, and if they make a partial tax payment, which they've done, they can also file the appeal at the ATV, which they've done. However, there is legislation that has already passed the House and the Senate and is ready for the governor's signature that will, that is likely going to result in these developers coming back to the town wanting to, wanting to execute a pilot agreement after all of that. So there is going to be really strong incentive for them to, to enter into a pilot agreement because they frankly are not tax exempt, and the law is going to make that very clear. Sorry to interrupt, Dennis.
Okay. The topic of tax titles, we have 26 properties right now in tax title. Many of them, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12 are repeats from last year. And we're familiar with the ones we really don't want to own. The dam down on Lower Pleasant, the burned down house on Old Central Street is in tax title. And Tom's Greenhouse. And one of the ones we may or may not want to own, because it will need a septic system from what I hear. I haven't officially found out, is the old train track by the tracks or whatever that was called.
On the tracks.
That's in tax title. However, it is on the market. I've seen the sign. We had a little bit of a problem with spooky world. One of the things that, there's really nothing in writing on how to do it. I talked to the attorney and I put out a thread. They went into tax title with the whole place and then they split the property. So we weren't allowing the folks that bought the house part to do anything because the rules are the tax goes with the parcel. However, talking to the attorney and talking to locals here and the assessors, there was the intent for the person to keep the more valuable part of the property that was selling it. So we did find a formula. Steve's really good at that stuff from his old days in Framingham and native. And it's for the assessors, but it makes sense. It's what I saw at treasurer's school. And we're going to call the old taking bad and then do a new one on the remaining $8,000 for the person who owes and owns the more valuable part of that split. So we'll see how that goes. We had two possible recoveries and it's one of the reasons I'd like that revolving account. The person who was selling it was talking up how it was a buildable lot, which we've all learned you don't do. And now after hundreds of dollars in legal fees that I have to pick up, et cetera, the people that are going to buy it have decided they might not buy it. So it's wasted six or eight months where it could have been auctioned off if we wanted. Or I am saving buildable parcels, there's three of them, for the housing commissioner, whatever, if we ever get our act together on affordable housing. And I know that there's interest in, from that, those quarters about any land that's buildable. So I'm saving it. If you want it auctioned off, that's fine. But we typically don't auction off. We keep property for either conservation or the future.
Dennis, that spooky world, the spooky world building?
Yes. Somebody bought the house, which is the lower value.
Yep.
And then the barns, and I guess there's some acreage, is the larger value. So we'll be working on that. It's, it's supposedly routine, but some things are routine to attorneys that we only do once in our lifetime, so they're going to help us through it. And I don't know how real estate and personal property are going, probably by late April. If, if collections aren't where they should be. We typically hit a 98% collection rate. We've kind of done that on the first half. We're up in the high 90s. I don't know if it's exactly 97, 98. And it's just the few that I talked about that are mucking up the works. And you got the message that Solomon Pond bought JCPenney's and was going to take them out of bankruptcy. So that kind of on my radar too for, let's hope we collect it. We're looking at, and we're proposing a new tax system, billing system. The one we have right now has a long list of problems. Interest is microcoded or hard-coded into the way they manage the software. So for example, when we go to UniBank, there's a penny or two or three that shows up on someone's bill that we just can't strip out. And it's not right. And the beta system won't do that. When the governor extended the two months for the late pay, it added 15 cents interest if you did an online payment. So fortunately on those, we could write them off, but it was a lot of work. The old interest doesn't calculate the, the old software doesn't calculate the interest that we have to track for CPA. It's all done manually. We have a subroutine that I wrote, but you still have to manually enter them in one at a time. If 12 people that day deserve interest for the CPA credit, I can't just take the total because there's different ratios depending on how much they paid. So that would be a step, step, step at a time, and it really slows us down. We get free printing for the auto excise tax. They can't do the barcode, which makes putting the money in a little bit quicker because of the microcode or the embedded code that they have in their software. So all in all, it's a pretty poor system. The screen has shrunk because of upgrades to Windows. And so it's probably about this big, no exaggeration, that part of your screen. So there's a lot of eye fatigue. Sixes look like eights to all of us, even with new glasses. It really is causing a lot of problems. The other thing is it's a top-down, which you don't see in software anymore. We have to do everything with the cap key on all the software. So when you jump out to get into the inspector's software, you have to remember to take the cap key off to make it work. So it's just antiquated and it's very slow. The documentation is poor.
And is this something that's on the warrant, the new software?
What's that?
Is that, is the, is the new software is on the warrant, correct?
Yes. The only glitch we've run into is, and it's sad, people are like that. It reminds me of the old digital. If you want to get your data out, there's about a $7,000 penalty, penalty to buy our own data from Point. And that will only cover three years worth of history, which sounds terrible, but it's really all we need. We have not a lot in the old days that requires research. We have plenty of paper. God knows we have plenty of paper. So at first we heard three years, oh my God. But in reality, the three years is more than enough to do what we need to do. Because you figure real estate disappears and becomes tax title within October of that year that you don't pay. And that's another thing. I'm doing all tax titles manually. And spreadsheets make mistakes. You overwrite a formula. You have to triple check when someone calls to see if they really owe that amount. So that's all done automatically by Point. We also manually interface from the assessors when we put data in for billing. And the floppies they have are so old, the disk, I'm sorry. We had to get a, an old disk reader from Travis to convert it in my office and then bring it back to the tax office to get it into Point and get it out to Kelly and Ryan or to, back to our system storage area. It's hard to explain, but, so that's it. It's really software that should be replaced. The only glitches, and Margaret's working on it. They, in the old, old, old contract, I think it was back in the 80s, when Richard started, they wanted a 60-day notice. And because of the timing for town meeting, it would only be 45. So that's the only thing that we're looking at that could muck up the works financially. And I don't want to spend $7,000 for the annual software support and then $7,000 or more for what we call blackmail. And that's what it is to get your data out. So that's where we're at on that one.
Okay.
Any questions before I finish up here?
The new, new software interface with the accounting software at all? So that when you make deposits, that reconciles automatically?
It's seamless from the assessors through to June, and it's two-way software. So right now, only one person can post payments. And if I'm covering both offices, I can't do it from my computer. And I think, Margaret, was it 13 people can do it now? You could get in the two assessors, Molly, the head assessor, in June, and, you know, and each person could have either read only or update, or you know how that software works.
Yep.
And yes, it does interface. June's not too clear about how much work it will save her, but it will save a ton of manual work through the tax title system right into. And it even does legal documents that are kind of nice looking. The Point ones look terrible, like a fourth grader.
My hope is that it would help with the, with the, with, with the two systems kind of working in tandem. It's going to help streamline reconciliation too. So that's, you know, that's one of my hopes with this.
And then one of the things we do at work for, for our accounting backups, even though we can extract data from it necessary, is still part of the annual closing process. We actually print a check register because, you know, paper, you don't need a computer to read paper. And so if the software goes away or something, it would be a pain, but you would still have at least a record of everything.
And that's basically what I do with the retirement. Most of the stuff is printed. Some of it's written on parchment paper from, what, 40 years ago? And yeah, it works. Just takes a little bit of time. If there aren't any more questions on that item, Worcester County Retirement threw us a curve. Anyone who works 20 hours to 29 hours a week, who used to qualify for Worcester County, and the people that are in it are grandfathered, but as of July 1st, they have to wait 15 months before they can join. And then they have to come up if they want to buy back the time with a minimum of 9% of what they earned, plus any time they went over, what is it? $576, which could happen. Sometimes they work extra. You add 2% to that. So the alternative may be OBR, the one I call the OBR folks, a smart plan over in Waltham. They didn't hear about this. This is unique to Worcester County. They made their own rule and PIRAC approved it. So that's something that affects about five people when they're replaced. And I'll see if OBR comes up, because you have to terminate people in OBR to get their money out. So if we use that method, it'd still be 2% short. So there's no happy alternative at this point. And you want to buy back your 15 months. The actuary study is done for the medical side of life. We finished the continuing disclosure, which was a lot of work. June did most of the work, to be honest with you. We finished the audit, which it was kind of a new for me, but June tried it last year, uploading everything to their software, so they don't even come out here anymore. It's kind of weird, but we got through that. I have a deadline to get the continuing disclosure in or we get penalized. And we're on schedule. But the finished audit is part of that plan. So we can squeak by with a draft, which we have, and I think you've got copies of. I've been dealing with one person who passed away that was well-loved, and it's dealing with the family for the insurance that we have. And we have two new hires. One of them filled out paperwork, but of course it wasn't correct.
But it will be correct, correct?
Yeah. And we have benefits enrollment coming up the month of April. And we're going to meet with the IAC tomorrow at, what, 10 o'clock? To review the free, to us, but not to the employee, new eye care plan. And there's three options. There's the, you know, like bronze, silver, gold. Well, there's the affordable middle cost and then the higher cost. So we're going to get together and go over all three of them, and we can only pick one.
This is fully voluntary, paid by the employee, premium paid by the employee, so.
We need a minimum of three people to sign up for it. What it did is it created a package of medical, dental, and now eye care. And it earned us a half a percent off of the two and, what was it, two and a half that it went up? Wasn't a lot. So we had a pretty good deal. And you probably have heard, the first month, there'll be no premium for anybody, for the town, for the employees. And the first time they'll see the new rates, which only went up 2 point something percent, a little bit higher for dental, 2.9, will be for July to cover August. And I think that's all I have.
All right. Is there any questions for Dennis from the board?
Yeah. Dennis, the revolving, the revolving tax title fund you would like to have.
Yes.
Could you explain to me sort of the processes that that improves? I'm not a big fan of new funds and new lines and just trying to make things more complicated in another place that money can be stuck and forgotten about. And so I want to be convinced that I'm wrong.
Well, I understand your position. One of the things that we do when we look at the budget for tax title is what has happened over the last three or four years. And if you look at my numbers, there was more than enough. There was plenty left over. So going into this year, 2020, where the tax settles came out, the $5,000 wasn't enough because for every tax title, and we have probably 12 left. How many did I say went in there? There were 26, but some were repeats.
Yep.
At $540 apiece, just to get them into the court. So there's 3,000 out of a $5,000 budget. And the same thing's going to happen this next year. Now, the law says, within three, three and a half years, you have to put people in tax title or you have to start all over again. But once they're in tax title, you can just keep it there forever. You technically don't have to move forward, but you don't want to wait too long with the COVID of kind of giving them a buy. But it's really not fair to other people we went after at the six-month mark. But we're going to have to wait because there's not enough money in it. And I anticipate some more that are going to add that 12. I hope they don't. But, and that's what I'm looking for late April to see how they're coming. It's mostly commercial. But, and, and that's what I'm looking for late April to see how they're coming. It's mostly commercial. Um, but that's one of the reasons it's a predict unpredictable thing, just like benefits are sometimes. Uh, and Medicare, which is kind of predictable if I know what the new payroll is going to be. Um, and that's one of the reasons a lot of cities and towns have already been doing this for many years. It's, it's nothing new. Um, there are two things on this update that the governor is trying to get through. I'm sorry, not the governor, uh, the Mass Municipal Association. And one of them is adding terminology because even though it's allowable to add and make sure that legal fees that we incur are collected, uh, and can go into this revolving fund. Absolutely no interest goes in. Um, and it's only the expenses you recover that are in the line item to begin with that eventually build up so that if you do have a court case, which we have one right now, um, because it's an attorney to attorney on this one, we're, they're trying to sell. It's in tax title privately. We end up picking up the legal tab, even though we're kind of secondary to the process. So that's why I'd like to have it so that little by little, we don't have to put it in the line item, which in itself isn't a big deal. But the treasurer also has the privilege of adding to the recap after it's set, well, as it's being said. Basic amounts that equal most of the, not all, but most of the expenses I'd look for to get those 12 or 10 or however, many end up going through court to begin the actual taking. So.
And where would money come from to go into this fund then?
It would only get funded as we recover tax titles. So either by court order or somebody redeems it, which I have one that was redeemed for about $8,000. The other one that's delayed is 83,000. But the only part of it that would go into the recovered, the, the, uh, fund would be the expenses I spent to get it. The interest and the taxes would go back to the general fund.
Okay.
And those categories are subject to the Department of Revenue. Uh, what's his name? He's got a position and, and he may or may not change him over the years. He has that power. Uh, but that's the only thing that could be surprised for you. Right now it's expense period.
So we would in theory seed the font, seed the fund with some monies initially. And then as you saw, as, as tax title issues get resolved, the taxes and interest go back to the general fund and the fees and our costs that you had to pay, the filing fees and legal fees. Where then re, refill this fund again.
Yes. And in Berlin, unless we have a bad year coming up, real bad.
Right.
It's going to build up real slow. So there'll be a line item next year and maybe the year after. Um, there won't be probably the need for putting it on the recap, which we'll have to talk about at the AFT. But for this year, because we've got to get moving on some of them.
Yep.
And that's how the system works. You have to report to the select board once a year, your report. Uh, and you have to go through the normal war, warrant process, even though the treasurer can spend it, um, as they see fit.
Okay. That helped, Scott?
Yes, that helped, that helped, that helped me understand it a lot.
Okay.
I have one question for Dennis. Um, I don't want to ask, but well, I'm going to ask. Um, if you had to put a ballpark amount on the money owed to us, tally from Solomon Pond, Sears, River Bridge, Otis, tax titles, spooky world. I think I've caught them all. Um, what are we looking at for owed money to the town-ish?
Well, the hotel is your big one.
Yeah.
Right now, if you want to go by who isn't paying. Um, that's two times 118,000 a year. Um, I don't have the list of new bills in front of me, but I can get that for you.
No, 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 no. I just didn't know if you had like an ish number to say, you know, there's $500,000 outstanding to the town. There's a million dollars outstanding to the town, just to try to get an idea of, you know, where we, where we are for owed monies.
That I can give you. Uh, there's 213,000 that were owed as of the 19th. I had them run it for me.
Okay.
And of that 213, 117, nine is the hotel.
Yep.
They owe another, uh, 3,300 in, in real estate for something, whatever it is, I don't know, but probably a little parcel they have. And then on the personal property, the hotel owes 12,000 times two. 12 right now, personal property is 45.7, half of that, 22,000 is the, um, solar.
Yep.
And the other big chunk is Homewood Suites. So you have two people making the percentages look terrible. When in fact they're in pretty darn good shape. Personal property is the worst collected category in most municipalities. There's just nothing to make people pay. Um, you know, it's interesting. We went to small claims court and got someone to pay five years, six years worth of the old stuff. And they're on the list again this year. So they don't really learn their lesson.
So we're looking at about 300K rounded up-ish.
Yeah. Times two, if they continue the pattern for the second half.
Okay. So Margaret, my $10 off in my checking account either way is really looking that bad at the moment, just saying.
As long as it's your own personal.
You also think of
I agree with Mark.
300,000 on a $15 million budget too, is, is nearing that $10 piece, especially when two people make up over half of it. And then for the hotel, is that money owed to us by Homewood Suites? Is that money owed to us by the Sennys?
That's Homewood Suites.
Yeah. Okay.
Now there is some kind of ownership thing there, but that's kind of a weird gray subject because it came up with permit.
Right. That, that's where I was about to go down is I thought we were nice on the permits because we thought this stuff was coming in and really pulling the permit and closing out down is a pretty extreme step, which I'd rather reserve for pretty extreme circumstances. Uh, and that maybe by next, by, by this December, if they're behind a whole year's worth, might be more interested in trying to do, but that, uh, uh, but yes, it is disappointing. I mean, I.
Another one that just came up recently and, you know, we kind of decided with COVID not to penalize the people that rent. If the landlord hasn't paid Dunkin' Donuts down at Old Central still hasn't paid. But Verk has or whoever owns a gas station.
Oh, on personal property.
Yeah. Yep.
Well, I, I thank you for all this information, Dennis. And, uh,
Dennis.
Appreciate, appreciate you taking the time.
We're busy.
And plus it's, and plus it's just nice to see you, Dennis.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Likewise.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis.
Bye, Dennis.
I shall.
How to put, I don't know how to, Dennis, you might have to stay there because I don't know how to put you back in the audience. Oh, yeah, I don't know. All right. I'm not going to disconnect you. I'm just going to stop your video for now. Okay, Dennis?
Okay. I'm just here for the articles too.
Okay. All right. Um.
Okay. So we're moving on to the town administrator report.
Yeah. Um, so next week you have June as the, um, as the department head providing updates. Is there anything specific that you'd like, uh, to hear from June on? Besides ambulance billing? I mean, she's got a whole load of other things. Uh, or would you just like her to bring her outline?
Um, I would say, you know, whatever you think is most important and, you know, maybe 10 minutes. Okay. Minutes at most.
Okay. Um, all right. So she'll bring her priorities. Uh, on the TA report this week, there were two things that I didn't, um, I didn't include. Uh, first of all, um, I plan to, um, I plan to enclose inserts in the tax bills uh, on hopefully some bright paper that noting the, uh, postponed date for annual town meeting. And if the board votes it tonight, the postponed date for the annual town election and the hours, the polling hours. Uh, and also, um, Dennis talked about the Tolman property, which kind of, uh, triggered my memory. CMR PC has confirmed, uh, that they are going to be moving forward with Fuss and O'Neill engineers on phase two brownfields, um, studies at the Tolman property this spring. So we've gotten confirmation on that. Um, now back to COVID. Uh, so effective today, um, order number 66 was, was issued, which moves the Commonwealth into phase four, step one of the reopening plan. Um, it also has transitioned the travel order to a travel advisory. Um, so meaning that it's not a strict order not to travel, but people are still being advised not to travel if not fully vaccinated. Uh, eligible today for vaccines are people ages 60 and older and, um, other certain customer facing positions, including, um, you know, food service, grocery store employees, public works, employees, public transit and public health employees. On, on April 5th, uh, people ages 55 and older and those with one or more medical conditions will be eligible to be that, will be eligible to, um, make appointments to be vaccinated. And then finally phase three will begin on April 19th, where all individuals ages 16 and older will be eligible to make appointments to be vaccinated. The under HR benefits, uh, the, uh, comments and questions from the select board and personnel committee have been submitted to the consultant. So she has those in hand. Uh, Dennis mentioned that the insurance advisory committee will be meeting tomorrow morning on the 100% voluntary vision coverage. Um, uh, we're asking for their feedback on, um, the tier, the tier plan that, um, that would be preferred. On finance, uh, community compact best practices grant, I had been awaiting for a consulting estimate for the financial management operations, technical assistance review. Um, I actually spoke with a, um, a consultant today who is going to be submitting an estimate to the town, um, that will, um, enclose with our, our grant application. Um, and we should have that by the end of the week. So, um, hopefully the estimate will come scoped out with, um, with various tasks. Um, I will share that with the board. So you can see, um, if we're fortunate enough to get the, the grant, um, it would be a very comprehensive, uh, scope of work on all different, uh, financial operations and management. Um, uh, reviews. So COVID expense tracking and reporting also under finance. Um, we now have our third, uh, funding source that's going to have to be separately, separately tracked. Um, and this is the American Rescue Act, the town, um, town, cities and towns are receiving significant funding through the American Rescue Act, uh, passed by Congress recently. Uh, the US Department of Treasury is still, is still developing guidance on that particular funding source. Um, but again, it will no doubt, um, it will no doubt require ongoing reporting, uh, by the town. Uh, this time my understanding is that this reporting could go on, uh, into 2024. So we're waiting and seeing what this one's going to bring. Now, uh, the community one stop for growth, uh, grants, uh, or the expression of interest. Um, I had circulated a study to more than 90 local official stakeholders, board committee members, et cetera. We received only 17 responses to the survey and the highest priority projects as, um, as identified in the survey were the Route 62 corridor study that was overwhelmingly the highest, um, the highest, uh, priority according to the respondents. Uh, number two was to assess acquire, remove or upgrade, upgrade the Wheeler Pond Dam. This is also tied to a tax titled property that Dennis was referring to. And then tied for third place, um, with overall positive responses were open space land acquisition, provided it is tied as an attraction to economic development. And, um, in South Pleasant, uh, South Street and Pleasant Street intersection. And, um, the river, road, river bridge, bridge reconstru- uh, reconstruction projects. So, uh, because time is of the essence here, I will go ahead and see if we can work with CMR PC to put together the expression of interest. This is not binding. The expression of interest is submitted as advance notice to the state. It allows for guidance and feedback from the state on, um, various grant opportunities for those things. Uh, we, I may also, I may also include the, um, the highway barn, uh, solar too, because that um, is under a potential grant program as well.
So when, if something comes of this expression of interest, does this come back to the board? Um, I know that as I read the, as I read the different things on the questionnaire, I'm thinking, well, I like, I like some parts of, of this one, but I don't like all parts of it.
Yeah. It's, there is nothing that would preclude the town from applying for grants for any and all of these projects or parts of the projects. So this is not limiting in any way whatsoever. This is just for an expression of interest to get state feedback on, on these, a few, a handful of these projects.
Okay.
Um, so the grant portal itself, the grants application, grant applications are not limited. We could apply for any number of projects. Okay?
All right.
Uh, the, the energy committee, um, has decided to contact, um, has decided that they'd like to contact Beacon Integrated Solutions, which is an energy consultant who would be able to do the meta grant work. Um, I've spoken now with, um, I've, I've spoken with Beth Greenby now a couple of times. She is actively preparing a proposal right now with, uh, various options for the energy committee to look at. Um, so that is in the works. Town meeting, um, the board of your last meeting talked about the handheld remote voting devices. We have received 300 of them. So, um, now the, um, the town meeting logistics group will be getting together to talk about the voting system requirements, any other equipment that will need to go with that. And of course the outdoor town meeting planning and, and setup. Uh, Board House, I said in my TA report that I expected a weatherization quote from Squaw Hollow this week and it came today. I have not had any time to look at it yet, uh, but it was received today. Um, and finally, um, River Bridge Development Agreement, I received a call from Chris Senney the other day. Um, again, asking to speak with the subset of the River Bridge Work Group. I explained, um, to him that the town is still gathering data, um, cost data on ambulance service and infrastructure, uh, projects that are cited in the development agreement to be paid for by River Bridge. We need to be sure, um, that any discussions with River Bridge are equitable and represent the town fairly. So, that's where we stand on that. And that's it right now.
Um, Margaret, what time is the IAC meeting tomorrow?
10 AM, I believe.
Okay. Can you send me the link? Cause I have it in for one, 1 PM. I don't know why, but I'm just hoping it's the same link.
I could be, I could be wrong. It is 1 PM.
Oh.
It's 1 PM. Do you have the link?
Yes, for 1 PM I do.
Okay. It's 1 PM, not 10 AM. I don't know. I was thinking 10 AM.
That's okay. All right. Um, any other questions for Margaret? Okay, Peg.
Um, so Mrs. Nadowitz, over the past couple of weeks, there's been a few emails going back and forth about, um, Maplewood. So where are we with that? What are we doing with that? Um, soil not accepted, accepted. I got a little bit lost in those emails.
Okay. So soil, uh, soils have been accepted according to our licensed site professional. Our licensed site professional is asking for a discussion directly with the Maplewood owners on what they call PFAS. It's Teflon. It, it, it's, um, um, it's contaminants that originate from, uh, Teflon, I, I believe, or something to that effect. Um, but it is a new DEP requirement that soils be screened for PFAS. So our, our LSP wants to talk with their LSP and the property owner about, um, about PFAS in soil. As far as the transportation, the trucking of it, um, there is no evidence. We've received no evidence whatsoever from the property. There is no evidence, we've received no evidence whatsoever from the property owner or their representative. Who is no longer representing the property owner, that the trucking is going to the upper portion of the property as cited in the settlement agreement. So the town's legal counsel who worked on this particular agreement. Has advised the town that we can move forward with enforcement of, you know, of speeding and things like that outside of the settlement agreement.
Okay. Did I, I thought I saw, I thought I saw an email that. There was that they had taken out the PFAS in in the soil that was going to be taken to Maplewood.
They can't just take out.
Or they.
So I'll I'll have to.
Well, I meant the the cell or something that had it in it.
Okay, all right, so.
The rest was accepted, I think you were copied on that one, Margaret.
I probably was. I too.
Because it was addressed to me and I thought, well.
We actually got something new today from our LSP that I haven't had a chance to look at yet, so that's where. It's where we stand at the moment.
Thanks, Margaret, that was it.
Okay.
All right. We'll move on to old business and the annual town meeting.
I hope that, I hope that I've made this a little easier, a little more streamlined tonight by giving you an actual list of the articles. That still need more action. First of all, the notice of postponement, we went through just a couple of iterations of that, it is now corrected and posted, so. All the dates and times are correct in that now.
Margaret, is that going to be fed to the item?
What is that?
Do you want me to push that to the item?
Yes, Peg, please. All right. Town meeting, so based on last week's discussion. The articles that were numbered one and two, the unpaid bills of prior fiscal years and the payment of snow and ice deficit spending have been removed. Articles still requiring select board action on inclusion are Article Two, this is the special legislation, this is what town council recommended town meeting ratify. Because the petition was actually submitted under holdroom by the governor. So I will double check with legal counsel to assure that this actually does have to stay in, I just haven't gotten an answer on that yet. Dennis talked to you about Article Three, the tax collection software conversion. Article Four, the Community Preservation Committee FY twenty one annual budget. June has reviewed the amounts and has a few recommendations on the summary, but this is an article that's going to have to. Be included in the in the warrant in order for the set asides for the current fiscal year to be made. Articles and jumping, you've approved everything between that and Article Seventeen, Article Seventeen is the Community Preservations Committee FY twenty two. Annual budget. And again, this is for next fiscal year, June is, June is looking over what the estimated revenues will be included as in this article. Article, where are we at, Article Nineteen, the welcome to Berlin roadside signs, I believe EDC is actually meeting imminently and. Will have voted its recommendation on this, I would recommend at this point, given EDC's prior conversations about this, I would recommend. Including this article in the warrant. Cemetery Commission Cemetery Driveway Paving. I did note this week, the prior articles that were voted by town meeting for cemetery driveway paving, so in FY eighteen, in FY seventeen. Article twenty six funded ten thousand dollars for cemetery driveway paving. In FY eighteen, Article twenty two funded another ten thousand and in FY twenty one, Article twenty four. Funded fifteen thousand and that full balance still remains.
The balance for twenty one or full balance for all three of them?
For, it's only the fifteen thousand dollars that remains. Now, my question for the board or or comment on this is that as a capital article, this did not go to the capital planning committee in accordance with the bylaw. So I don't know where the board stands. As far as bringing this article outside of the the capital, capital review process.
Did you know why didn't they, I mean, we've known about this article for quite a while.
Well, this came after after the entire capital budget was was developed. So this is a relatively new one compared to the ones that are on the capital budget, so I can't speak to.
So capital planning is recommending, not recommending this?
No, they didn't take action on this because this came after they had, after they had submitted the capital budget.
How about, how about Finance Committee?
The Finance Committee hasn't made their recommendations on the warrant articles yet, so they'll be addressing this this week.
So if cemetery has fifteen thousand that they can use, are they aware that they have fifteen thousand they can use, or did they assume that it's spent, so they're asking for ten more?
I mean, they think that they, no, they actually do know this because in the summary, they note that the appropriation would be used with an existing one. So they do, you know, they're aware of the existing appropriation. Unfortunately, I don't think I I have received an estimate on the paving, it could very well require the, you know, thirty thousand dollars.
The seventeen, the twenty seventeen and twenty eighteen articles is there wasn't a sense of how much was really going to take, and so what they're going to do is. With spare time and and some of that money go as far as they could. And they've managed to get at South Cemetery some significant amount of paving. I would, if I had to hazard a guess, based on what there's already done for twenty thousand. And that this twenty five thousand would likely finish them off with something spare that would ended up being sent back to the town. They didn't want that fifteen thousand won't won't get you all the way to the end and leaves just a really odd small amount left.
So they have done some paving, Scott?
Yes, yeah, it's 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 a cemetery I walk fairly often because it's near me. And I I remember the first year how much they've done, I know how much, I I remember how much they have done in twenty eighteen and how much is sort of left of the dirt. And broken up roads from earlier years. Hopefully, hopefully, having pavement will get people to stay on the pavement and not cut the corners as bad and and cause ground damage and. And personally feel embarrassed for the town where there are clearly tire tracks that have gone over some ground stones.
Well, because this will require quotes, this is going to require quotes. Maybe when, you know, the town does select a contractor for the parking lot. We could have them take a look and and maybe submit a quote and kind of catch them while they're here and save a few bucks.
So can I ask kind of like a point of order on this article? Cemetery Commission hasn't met in a while. Either on Zoom and definitely not in person, so I guess my first question is, how did they come up with this amount, who came up with this amount? And, you know, how is this working if they're not meeting as a group under open meeting law to to talk about this?
I know, I can't answer the question because we received the request from the Cemetery Commission, I can certainly, oh, Eloise has her hand up, but I could certainly follow up with them. Would would you like me to?
Yes.
Okay, okay, Eloise, you can unmute.
The Cemetery Commission has hosted meetings and they've had some of them down at the cemetery, I believe, South Cemetery or North, but not the central one. In person so that they can. Look at the road and and that type of stuff, and they said with social distance distancing. That's all I know.
Thank you.
I will, I can follow up with with Barry on this.
Yeah, because it looks like. The sixteenth. Well, so February sixteenth, it was canceled, January nineteenth, it was canceled, and going the other way, December fifteenth, it was canceled, March sixteenth. There's no Zoom information at all, it's just an agenda. And I can't imagine people going outside in March. It's a wee bit cold, because it says Berlin Town Offices, and we know that town offices aren't open.
I will, I will ask for clarification on that one.
Thanks.
Okay.
Onward and upward, right. The next one is the tax title revolving fund requested by the treasurer collector, and he has explained, he's explained that to the board. The next article, Article twenty two is the Energy Committee's Special Purpose Stabilization Fund, funding of it, it it was established. Back in twenty, I want to, was it twenty eighteen, yes. I think, or was it nineteen, I don't know, it was, it was a couple of years ago, it was established, and there was some seed funding put in from the energy aggregation adders. The total amount funded at that time was four thousand eighty seven dollars. Should the amount, okay, so the amount of money. That would be put into this article would be the total receipts for FY twenty, which is ten thousand four hundred seven dollars and two cents. And that would come from free cash, because these revenues have been general fund revenues up until the present time. This article asks for essentially for automatic funding of the Special Purpose Stabilization Fund. Beginning in FY twenty one. From those energy aggregation adder revenues.
Okay.
Okay. Right, the next one is. The movable radar speed signs, we talked last week, the Traffic Safety Advisory Committee did meet, recommended twelve thousand dollars to purchase the movable radar speed limit signs. However, they did not want to limit them to solar because the rechargeable ones, as opposed to the solar ones. Have more capacity to monitor speeds, the black box behind the sign, so. I don't know if anybody is here from the committee, but. If you have any questions, I could text Chief and ask him to come up. The next one is the Advanced Life Support Feasibility Study, I think I'm still waiting to hear from the fire chief on. On the cost for that analysis. And then the next is the the request by the fire chief for the bylaw on the numbering of buildings. And he spoke with you about that, I think, last week, right? Article twenty six is parking enforcement, this is a chapter acceptance, this would be to accept the provisions of Chapter ninety, Section twenty A. This is to allow enforcement of parking violations, which currently the police department doesn't have the ability to do. The enforcement would be based on rules and regulations that are established by the select board, so the police department would enforce the board's rules and regulations on this. Additionally, this establishes a parking clerk who would be responsible for. The the hearings, the hearings on appeals of parking violations, and this is a function that the Treasurer Collector's Office. Could provide, we wouldn't anticipate a significant number of parking violations. And then the next one, Article twenty seven is also on parking enforcement, and this would be relevant to the removal of illegally parked vehicles or the ability to tow. Based on violations of the board's rules and regulations. Article twenty eight is the Personnel Bylaw Amendment. This is still a placeholder here, the Personnel Committee is going to be meeting on Wednesday night and is going to be discussing. The proposed changes to the Personnel, the Personnel Bylaw. With respect to what is still relevant and what is not. The next one is Article twenty nine, this is the Wetlands Protection Bylaw submitted by the Conservation Commission. And then followed by zoning by law amendments, I believe the Planning Board is scheduling hearings. On the zoning board, on the zoning by law amendments on April fifteenth. So I I do know that on April fifteenth, the citizen petition zoning by law amendments will be heard by the Planning Board. And in fact, I understand that the Senes will be informally meeting with the Planning Board tomorrow night to talk about their proposals, so just a, just a heads up on that. And that is it, those, that is the entire list of articles that remain for board action.
Are you making a recommendation of some kind on which ones you? Think should be approved at this?
Yeah, I can, I can actually, I can, I can whittle the list down, I would recommend approval of, I would recommend approving. Including Article Three, the Tax Collection Software Conversion Funding. Because that is an absolute positive necessity, this this DOS based software that Dennis explained. Has been used by that office since nineteen ninety eight, and it's so, it's so outdated, we need to. We need to improve that. I would also, I would also recommend including Articles Four and Seventeen, the Community Preservation Act Budget Article, or the Community Preservation Committee Budget Articles. Article nineteen, the welcome to Berlin roadside signs. Article twenty one, the tax title revolving fund. Article twenty two, the Energy Committee Special Purpose Stabilization Funding. Article twenty three, the radar speed signs. Article twenty four, the Advanced Life Support Feasibility Study, but I know that you need an amount before you can include that, so I know that that has to be helped. I would, I would support, I'm sorry, I would support, I know the chief recommends including the bylaw on numbering of buildings, and I would support him in that request. I would recommend including the acceptance of of statute on parking enforcement to allow the town to begin to enforce parking violations. I know the Personnel Committee, the Personnel Bylaw Article has to wait until Personnel Committee meets. And I know that the the board still has questions on the Wetlands Protection Bylaw. However, it's my understanding of Conservation Commission is moving forward with community outreach and education on that bylaw. And if that is confirmed, I would recommend including that one. And the zoning by law amendments, I would recommend including all of those submitted by the Personnel Committee, all of those that they are going to conduct hearings on, which I believe is all Articles thirty to thirty five.
You mean the Planning Board?
It would have been easier for me to say which ones I would ask the board to hold on. Article twenty, Article twenty four, and Article twenty eight.
Okay.
Go ahead, Chris.
No, I was just going to ask if there was a motion.
So. I don't agree with all of them, I think some of them shouldn't be on the warrant, I don't think they should be, and so what's the best way to proceed?
How many, how many no's?
Yes, it is, the the no's are very few.
Okay.
And and because because one of them, she's already pulled. I am really, the the numbering by law. I just, I think we should do this by policy, I think we should do this with PR, I I'm not a big fan of 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 adding more rules and regulations. And then I I my brain can't find the one that was before it that I opposed, and I can't remember where it is, I I'm still not a big fan of the. Revolving fund, the new revolving fund. For tax title, although I feel like, I I feel way better about it than I did. And so the the amount of opposition to it is significantly lower, Dennis did a good job explaining, I can see how it's working, it's just the general, we keep creating all these little funds that have all these little restrictions on them. And I think that comes back to bite us more than it protects us.
Is that the only two?
I I think those are the only two.
Okay. So with the exception of those two. Do I hear a motion to approve the others that Margaret has suggested?
I have a question on a couple of them.
A couple more?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I know that she was here. Oh, she is there. I know that Carolyn McDonald from Conservation is in the audience. And I know that they're doing a lot of reach out, but I would, um, honestly like to hear from all the committees first in their approvals and their comments and their feedbacks. I know they've gone around. I know that Carolyn and John have made their way around. I think they went to ZBA last week, week before.
Yeah.
And they had some questions, but I really would like to hear input from the other committees and I know that they are reaching out to do public, uh, input, but.
So would you like to hold on that one? Not, not a no, but just a hold on it until maybe next week?
Yeah, until we, oh, look, Carolyn has her, look at her.
Carolyn has her hand up.
Yes, she has. See, I knew if I prompted her, she, she put her hand up.
Okay.
So it's all part of my evil magic.
Mm-hmm.
All right, Carolyn, you can unmute if you'd like.
All right. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
I knew you'd rope me in, Peg. I was just sitting here playing solitaire, waiting for you. Um, the last board that I, I believe it's the last one that we have yet to speak to is FinCom and we are, I think just John's going to make that one on Wednesday night. Um.
Did you go to Board of Health, Carolyn?
We, actually, I guess technically we didn't go to the whole board. We did sit down with Paul McCalk and Peter Hoffman uh, at the same time. So I guess technically we haven't been before the whole board.
Okay.
Um, but we can certainly do that if that would, um, make you guys more comfortable.
You got crickets in the background?
Yeah, Carolyn.
Those are my peepers.
I hear the peepers, yeah.
Isn't that fabulous? I have, I'm like all bundled up in a blanket because I have the windows open, so I can hear them.
Carolyn has the first peepers.
I'm not looking forward to them. They're eighty-four decibels.
They're music to my ears.
So I, I think whatever it, however, um, you know, if you'd like to get this bylaw passed, I think, you know, you need to probably as a board decides, the more committees, the better, I guess.
Sure, sure. Um, yeah, and I mean, we've been started to do some public outreach, but have been a little bit restrained because it's not officially on the warrant yet. And we don't want to do this big hoopla and then be like, oh, just kidding. So that's one of the reasons I'm here tonight is just to kind of see where that stood. But yeah, I've been, I've got yard signs designed. I've got a flyer designed. I've got a PowerPoint presentation in the process. And I have a Facebook posting in the, already designed. I'm just kind of waiting to pull the trigger.
Okay. Hey, does that help?
No, I, no, I know it helps because I sit in on the conservation meetings. So, you know, I had some, well, no, I had inside skinny, but I know that you guys haven't. So I wanted you to hear, you know, like with a gentle prod from Carolyn to say that they have met with XYZ committees, but I'd really like to hear almost like a summary from each committee that they meet with to say, yes, we approve. Yes, we have reservations. You know, yeah, we're good. No, we have some really, you know, big reservations. Just so again, you can, I don't want a repeat performance of what happened last time Conservation came below, came before the board. So, you know.
Agreed.
Yeah. So I want, you know, Carolyn and company to, you know, get out there and kind of pound the pavement and, you know, speak to more than three folks in the town and truly, truly get their, get their input. So that i- if it's a go, it's a go of, there's a lot of input and not just one or two. And it doesn't turn into, well, I hear that you want to take my property away.
Do you, how about if, um, just a suggestion, but um, maybe Carolyn could share the, who that they've been to? And, uh, we could ask, or perhaps I, I think maybe Peg could ask those particular groups what their input is. Does that sound like any kind?
Yeah, I mean, we.
Anything helpful?
We, um, we, like I said, we talked to Paul, we talked to, um, Peter Hoffman. We've talked to the Planning Board as a group and Tim Wheeler separately as a property owner. We've talked to, um, Mike Sawyer as a property owner. We've talked to ZBA. We have FinCom on the agenda. Trying to think who else that might be it currently.
Okay.
Carolyn, when's your next meeting? It's not for a couple of weeks, right?
No, it's this week.
Oh, is it?
Oh, no, sorry, next week. This week's Planning Board.
Okay.
Uh, the first and third Wednesdays are Conservation.
Could you circle back to the groups that you've met with? And yeah, for Board of Health, I really would like you to talk to all of Board of Health and not just Paul and
Okay.
get something back to us.
Maybe have them send it to us?
Yeah, sure.
That, you know.
Yep.
What their concerns are, you know?
Yeah, um, you know. Yeah, ZBA definitely, um, had the most questions. And, you know, that in each group that we've met with, there has been the philosophical, you know, oh, another bylaw. But I believe that, so what we're asking for, it's a very different document than what we've asked for in the past. I feel like we've narrowed our focus down to, there's nine key tools that we would like the town to allow us to have that will help us in our, um, in our role as the Conservation Commission. And, um, it's a much simpler document. And, you know, everybody that we have met with that, um, we've talked to and addressed their concerns or answered their questions. At, at the end, at least, I, I, I guess I can only say there have definitely, the Planning Board definitely supports it. Lynn Ryan definitely expressed her support. I'm trying to remember if each and every member did. They didn't take a vote. But there has been general, there have definitely been some challenging questions, but I feel like we've answered them all satisfactory and ultimately end with, um, general support.
Yeah, I think Carolyn, the big thing is just to get the public out because that's, you know, if you.
Right, well, but again.
In the meeting, I know, I know.
Exactly. We, we don't want to, until it's, it's, you know, blessed by you guys as being on the warrant, I don't want to start getting, yeah, I, I just, I'm hesitant to start putting it out there, um.
I don't, I don't, yeah, I don't blame you. I mean, I think probably makes sense, but maybe if you do have, each of you have people that you talk to, general public, you might at least sort of get the word out that this is a possibility.
Right.
Yeah.
Yep. There's a hand up in the crowd.
There is, and, and as Carolyn noted, um, I'm sorry, as Peg noted, as somebody noted. The, the Finance Committee has invited, um, has invited con, uh, representatives of CONCON to their meeting on Wednesday night to talk with them about financial implications or potential financial implications. All right, so I'm gonna, um, uh, Carolyn, I'll leave your mic open. Janet, um, I'm you, Janet, okay, Janet, you're up.
I just had a question. I, and I, um, I have been listening and, um, there have been a lot of questions, um, answered, but I think what I, as a, um, I'm struggling with is and I'll ask at the general forum, so maybe you need to get your ducks in a row. What exactly is the difference between the last one and the, and this one? I have not personally seen. Um, I have my, the last one front that's in the, uh, Old Town, um, warrant book and then, um, so in this one. And I would hate, I mean, it's going on the warrant and you're waiting to do the public hearing after, but I'm, I, I'm kind of leery because I've done a little research. Other towns have had many meetings before they've actually put it on the warrant to try to get the questions less because it goes on the warrant and then now you've got the public there. They're going to be asking questions at town meeting and I'm like, we're already trying to slim downtown meeting in the length of it. I just think it would make more sense to do it the opposite way. That's just my personal opinion, not, not anybody else's but mine. If you hear what I'm saying, you know.
I, I, I understand what you're saying, Janet. Um, it is tough, you know, with all these restrictions about.
Very hard and get the word out, very, very hard.
Yeah.
If I may, uh, at least address part of what Janet said.
Well, I, I don't know how much time we want to spend on this. It could take a long time to explain the differences between.
No, I, I actually, what I wanted to tell her was that I have uploaded the draft to, um,
Okay.
the Conservation website on the town website. So, um, all eight pages are there for her to look at and compare.
Wow, thanks.
And we definitely, I mean, that's part of what I have all of these things that I have created is addressing exactly those points, but, um, for now, you can look at it there.
That's, that's true.
Thank you.
And, and anyone who wants to can too.
Yes, that's why I did that early.
Yeah, good. Um, so, so where are we with the articles?
It looks as though, uh, okay, correct me if I'm wrong, looks as though the hold would be on Article twenty, twenty-one, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-eight, and twenty-nine, six of them.
I don't know what those are.
So that would be cemetery driveway paving, tax title revolving, advanced life support feasibility study, numbering of buildings by law, Personnel Bylaw, and Wetlands Protection Bylaw.
Did you say revolving account or?
I did, tax title revolving, yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. All right.
So.
Is that amendable?
I, I will make a mo- motion to, to add to the town warrants, all of those, but the ones that Margaret just listed.
I second.
I'll be honest.
All right, that sounds good to me. Uh, we'll take a vote. Keith, aye?
Stone aye.
Hawkins aye.
All right.
Now, I don't think I've done, done with this topic quite yet, um, in that, uh, we have to be done next week, correct? To get things in the, in the, in the town, because this is the, we don't want this town report not to come out on April twenty-ninth. So we, our, our calendar says by next week, we have to be done all of these. And so on, on the ones that the ones we have held, is anything going to change, Eugene, today and next week? Where we can't vote now on some of those, because even the ones that I'm not a fan of, I don't, I think I'm still not going to be a fan next week. And so we'll just vote two to one and we'll add it to the warrant. I mean, I.
Well, I, I, I have one more question too for, for Peg and Scott, which we may want to talk about next week, whether, depending on how you feel about it. Would the board like to make recommendations on any of these articles? And, and, and I'll let you think about it because I was thinking if we did want to make recommendations, perhaps we could individually email Margaret or, uh, or we could just take a vote now, whether we want to make recommendations on any of the articles. It hasn't been done in a, in, you know, in Berlin. Um, I think a lot of people in the past that were selectmen felt it was very, uh, political and you know, we are in politics.
It, it is political and it could be that instead of taking votes at all, we find the ones we think are most important for the town, uh, where the three of us are in agreement and put recommendations on a handful of these, somehow saying that just because we didn't make a recommendation doesn't mean we oppose them, but really, if anything passes a town meeting, we would love, really love these to pass. I don't, and, and I'd have to think about which ones I think fall in that category.
Okay. Um, so what, what is your suggestion for this evening or for?
Not, not this evening.
Not, not for this.
No, no, I, I agree, not to take a vote on the articles or, or whether to, uh, make a recommendation on the articles this evening, because it's really not on the agenda. But I wanted to ask you, um, you know, because next week is one of the last weeks that we should, um, be working on this. Would it make sense to, um, if there were certain articles that you wanted to make recommendations on? Or, or just, uh, like email, would it be appropriate to email me or would it be appropriate to email Margaret?
I would suggest, I would suggest e- emailing me if, you know, your thoughts on, on how you'd like to do that. I mean, different towns do it differently. Like, you know, Chris, like you said, you know, the Berlin has not, the Berlin's board has not done it because it's perceived as, uh, political. There are other towns whose board members actually have pre-prepared article assignments. So to make the motion at town meeting, they, um, they have a, um, a little script that that member who made the motion follows as far as a recommendation or a summary of the motion. So it's, it's done in a, a bunch of different ways.
Okay. So do you want just some time to think about it?
Yes.
Okay.
And I will, I will, I'll think about it. I'll email something to Margaret before next Tuesday's meeting, next Monday's meeting, sorry, next Monday's meeting. Uh, so if all three of us are sort of on the same page or if we're on different pages, we have a sense of where that's like.
Okay, all right. Is that good with you, Peg?
Yep, that's fine.
Okay.
Do, do we want to vote on the tax title revolving fund and putting it on the agenda?
That's one that's not going to change between now and next week.
Right. And I think the same about the numbering by law, that even though I'm not a fan to be the one of those, I, I don't think we need to hold off voting on it.
Okay. Do you want to make a motion?
No.
Because, well, no, because we can always pass over this, because, well, I mean, so you have, you have a plan B, but yeah, nothing's, nothing's going to, to change, you know? You know, Margaret's going to reach out to cemetery and, and find out how they're making
Yeah.
decisions when they don't meet. And, you know, the title. I'd make a motion to, to, um, accept all the ones that, um, um, I make a motion to accept the articles with the exception of the ones pointed out by Margaret. No, I don't, I take that back.
Didn't we already do that?
Yeah, I tell, I, I rephrase. I make a motion, I make a motion to accept all the articles as they, as written.
Did we, did we already do that?
We, we, we did that, we, we polled four of them and I'm just wondering whether or not tax title and numbering by lot, uh, uh, twenty-one and twenty-five that Peg, you make the motion, I'll second it and then I'll just vote against it because I don't think they should be there, but I think I'm in the minority. And I don't think that's going to change anything next week and it just allows more things to be done.
Well, you know, I'm, I'm actually, I think I'm going to vote no on the, on the, um, the numbering one also. I think it maybe should be a policy. I, you know, and I think maybe from what Chief, uh, Clerk said last week, was it?
Yes, and he's here, by the way, and if you.
I think he, uh, you know, sort of, um, indicated that, you know, he didn't feel comfortable like, you know, fining people and, and so it would be, he, he said he's never had to use the fines in other towns and things like that. So I was thinking that, you know, yeah, it, it, it is a good idea, but I don't know that it has to be a bylaw. So what was the other one? Oh, the revolving.
The other one is the robbing fund, yeah.
And the revolving account, I think I will vote in favor of.
Yep.
So, um, do we want motions on these separately then or?
Yeah, why don't we?
I would take them up separately.
Okay. So the, um, motion to, uh, include the house numbering on, uh, the warrant, I will make the motion.
I, I think it's to make a motion to pull the Article twenty-five and I can make that motion.
It doesn't matter which way.
Yeah, yeah.
Not include.
Yeah, to, to not include Article twenty-five. I'll make that motion.
Okay. I'll second it. Um, shall we, should, yeah. So I'm so used to just saying Keith, aye? So to pull the article, so it would be Keith, aye?
Yes.
Oh, no.
And Hawkins, aye.
Okay. So that motion pass, passes.
Understanding, of course, that there would be, if this would be policy driven.
Right.
Right. Um, and the other one is the.
Establishment of Tax Style.
And wasn't it the um?
Article twenty-one, tax title revolving fund.
Right, 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 okay, so that would be to pull that one.
Uh, to keep that one, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be the only no, it sounds like, and so it will go two to one.
Well, I mean, you could do it either way, either way, it's going to come out the same way, you know. So, so to keep it on, is that what you would?
Or to put it on.
To make, okay, make the motion.
Well, here, I'll make the motion, and I'll just vote again, so I'll make the motion to to put on article twenty-one, Establish the Tax Title Revolving Fund.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, so that was to put it on.
Right.
Great, so we, Keith, aye.
Stone, aye.
Hawkins, no.
Okay.
Okay, so that's not, okay, okay, so.
And then I am, I'm ready to put the wetlands one on, but if we think there's going to be more information between now and next week, I'm also perfectly fine waiting on that one.
What do you think, Peg?
I'm okay, you know what, as I said, I've I've been listening to conservation and, you know, Carolyn and I have had chats. And I've had chats with the group, and they know what they need to do. In terms of getting the information out and getting the boards, the various boards that they've been to, you know, including agriculture. We want to make sure that they have a voice as well. And um, I honestly think that conservation has learned from their last meeting uh, to get the word out. So I will, um, I'm okay with it going on the article, on the warrant, and let the people of the town decide.
So that, then I will make the motion to include article twenty-one, uh, the wetlands protection by law on the town warrant.
Twenty-nine, article twenty-nine, um, I second.
Okay. And, you know, the only concern I had before we take a vote is just that, like you said, Peg, earlier. I just don't want to repeat of um, uh, the last town meeting where it was on the warrant. So I'm hoping that it will go better and 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 the word gets out, more information gets out. And um, so we'll, we'll take a vote. Uh, Keith, aye.
Stone, aye.
Hawkins, aye.
Okay.
Okay, so there are two hands up in the audience, Carolyn and Janet both have their hands up. Um, would you like, oh, Carolyn has her hand up.
Okay.
Um, let me just. Okay, Carolyn, you can unmute.
Uh, hi, guys, so I just checked the meeting schedule for the Agricultural Commission and the Board of Health. And neither one of them will meet before your vote next week. We will certainly talk to them, but I don't know that it's going to be helpful in you guys making your decisions.
We just.
We just voted to put it on the, we just voted to put it on.
Oh, oh, sorry, I had you muted because, yeah.
Wow.
All right.
Removed, sorry, you don't pay attention to us, get out.
Well, excellent, thank you so much, that's very helpful, we will still meet with both of them.
Okay, great. The more, the more, I think, the more people you talk to. Um, and there won't be so many surprises or anything for people at town meeting.
I, I really don't want any surprises.
Yeah.
A pre-town meeting and budget forum before the town meeting um, this year as well, so there'll be that opportunity too.
Yep, and we're also gonna, um, I've already talked to Peg about going to coffee talk. As well as our public hearing and as well as anything else that we can cobble together. But um, yeah, there's at least those opportunities.
Agreed.
Hey, good.
Excellent, all right, well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, so you're down to just three, three remaining that are held.
Okay, good.
And they all have information that we'll get between now and next week that will. They'll give us more information of, like, the life support one will be a number.
We'll get a number on that, yes, I know, well, it looks like Chief's gone, but yes, um, he's supposed to be working on this, so yes.
All right. Are we moving on to the FY twenty-two budget updates?
Yes, um, and hopefully this is going to be um, fairly straightforward. You've got one budget line left to um, to approve, and that is line. Finance Committee, by the way, finished last week with all of their, with all of their uh, votes to recommend. Um, so this is line one oh eight, the Tohato Assessment. I think um, the information that was requested of um, the school district was shared. Uh, with all board members and the finance committee members. Um, and the information that we got back included a small reduction in Tohato's assessment. Due to an adjustment in the Worcester Regional Retirement Assessment. Um, so the number that shows in line one oh eight now, um, is the previous number reduced by three thousand seven hundred ninety dollars. Which was the number that was adjusted for Worcester Regional Retirement. And so the Finance Committee, um, I mean, it threw the um, the balance out by three thousand seven hundred ninety dollars. The Finance Committee voted to reduce the local property taxes used by three thousand seven hundred ninety dollars. Um, so it's a balanced, uh, it's a balanced budget uh, at this point. Um, the Finance Committee, okay, I think you probably also saw the email that I sent. Uh, to the school district after the Finance Committee's meeting, asking if the school district notify the town as soon as they hear of any. Changes in in state aid or any other budgetary changes that could affect the town's assessment this year. Um, so that was sent to the finance, the uh, the school district. And then finally, the Finance Committee also, also supports doing a joint letter with the Select Board. To give the school district advance notice before next year on sustainable or unsustainable. Budget increases, so I'm going to be drafting that letter, I just haven't had a chance to do it yet, so.
Okay, so we need a vote to approve or not to approve to put the Tohato um, line. In the budget on the town meeting warrant.
So moved to include the Finance Committee recommendation for Tohato Assessment.
And seconded.
Okay, we'll take a vote, Keith, aye.
Stone, aye.
Hawkins, aye.
There you go, you are all set with that. And the only other thing that I have on budget is that contingency line item policy and procedure. I know the board voted two to one last Monday um, on this policy and procedure. But the Finance Committee caught something on number two of the policy portion. Um, it still included the the words market wage adjustments or extraordinary staffing needs. The Finance Committee struck that, so I'm just asking for the board's acknowledgement of that change or just to ratify your vote, um, noting that amendment.
Okay.
I I'm fine, if there's a motion, I am fine with motioning that amendment.
I was just going to say, um, do I hear a motion to um, ratify our vote from last time? Or to, I'm sorry, to ratify the vote with that change?
Scott just made it, I second it.
I I'm.
Okay, do I hear a second?
I already did.
Oh. What was I doing, talking?
Like Carolyn, you had us on mute.
Yeah, right. I, let's take a vote, Keith, aye.
Stone, aye.
Hawkins, aye.
All right, there we go. Um, we're moving on to the Cemetery Commissioners and Special Municipal Employee Designation.
So this morning I received in my mailbox, um, the signed twenty-day disclosure from Robert Guilde. Um, this is um, um, this is to follow the board's vote. On special municipal employee designation for the Cemetery Commission. I think I put a recommendation or a summary of of what this is in your folder for tonight. Um, so what I'm asking the board to do is to designate the Cemetery Commissioners as special municipal employees until June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one. And um, as long as that is approved, uh, to approve the twenty-D disclosure filing. By Robert Guilde, who is a Cemetery Commissioner. In order to allow him to continue contracted vendor services until June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-one. This has been a long time coming, this was last August, or before that, maybe.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
And seconded.
Okay, let's take a vote, Keith, aye.
Stone, aye.
Hawkins, aye.
Okay, thank you. Um, and for Eloise's information, this will be filed with the Town Clerk once it's approved by, well, the board has approved it, so this, it'll be filed with the Town Clerk.
Okay. Uh, the next thing on the agenda is a vote to postpone the annual town election.
Um, Eloise, if you'd like to speak to this, you're welcome to. Um, Eloise did send an email, um, noting that um, she has requested that the town election be held on May twenty-fourth. Um, the hours would be from noon to eight P M, twelve noon to eight P M.
Okay. Go ahead.
I had a question on this, I, was it last year? I don't remember. Um, did we talk about canceling the selectman meeting on the night of?
Yes.
Margaret shaking her head.
Yes, and actually, your meeting is not scheduled for May tenth this year, so you may have to move that non-meeting night to May twenty-fourth instead.
And just flip them, so meet on the tenth and not meet on the twenty-fourth?
Yes, I I think that that would make sense, that way all the focus can be on the election.
Yeah. All right, that's, that's perfectly doable.
Okay, so the board will just need to vote that.
All right, do I hear a motion?
I move, we postpone the town election to May twenty-fourth, election hours being noon to eight P M.
Okay, okay, and Keith, aye.
Stone, aye.
Hawkins, aye.
Margaret, I'm going to assume that that needs to go with the uh, notice on the town, moving the town, okay.
Yes, yes, and again, we'll be doing inserts on these, on the postponed town meeting and election in the tax.
All right, I'll get it out to Jan and see when she, uh, maybe she can post it a couple times.
Okay. All right, moving on to the draft school lease agreement.
Well, this ought to take all of thirty seconds, your very first preliminary draft has been uploaded to your agenda folder for tonight. Um, this has taken, uh, school lease agreements are generally pretty standard. Um, I have tried to incorporate everything from the regional school agreement regarding uh, the school lease into this particular agreement. I'm just asking for the board to review it over the next week. Um, I'm sharing it with the town of Boylston and with the school district, so they can see it. Um, and we can start getting comments on it and get this, um, get this in place.
Okay.
Do you want comments written back to you by Monday?
Um, yeah, that would, that would be fine, yeah, that would be fine, thanks.
Either that or bring him up on Monday.
Or bring him up on Monday, yeah.
Yeah. Is this something that has to go to town meeting?
No, it doesn't have to go to town meeting, it's actually a requirement of the of the regional agreement, and it's, um, it's going to be executed by the board.
Okay, good. Um, all right, then we will do that, we'll be ready for Monday. Um, the earthworks permit.
Okay, so the earthworks permit, um, this is another thing that's been hanging around for quite some time. The, I have notified the applicant that the, that I bring a proposed hearing date of April twenty-sixth to the board tonight. Um, according to the board's um, adopted uh, earthwork permit. Um, guidelines or checklist, um, the board is uh, supposed to set a time and a place for the public hearing. Um, and then we need to provide notice of the hearing to the applicant. Then the applicant um, needs to publish notice of the hearing at least twenty-one days in advance of the hearing and to, to local newspapers. So therefore, I recommend that the hearing date be scheduled for April twenty-sixth. Uh, Monday, April twenty-sixth at, we could do it right at seven thirty P M if you'd like, or right, I'm sorry, right at seven. Or do, I don't know what time, whatever time you want to do.
Probably seven thirty, that's usual.
Thirty, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll notify the applicant, we'll get a, a notice. I will get a notice uh, to him, so he can get it published in the, in the newspaper.
Okay.
Margaret, as a side note to that, um, on that meeting, you know, earthworks folks did a good job, but I know that there's still questions, you know. Of course, if you think in your wayback machine, there was some discussion about combining the uh, light kind soil. And earthworks by law into one, but it never went anywhere. So I don't know if um, uh, earthworks is going to tackle that. I know there was some discussion way back when of talking to, was it Amy?
Amy, Amy was completely aware of it and was willing to work with um, Joe.
Yeah.
And then uh, Joe did it on his own, and I think that's why it didn't go anywhere.
Yeah, so Margaret, I don't know, heads up, you know, earthworks might be talking about it, they might request, um, you know, an opportunity to talk to Amy. You know, don't know, I only spoke with one member this afternoon, I know that he's uh, you know, cautious, obviously, about spending town money. And needs a better understanding of it, but you know, kind of keep it out here that, um, that may pop up at some time.
Yeah, if they'd like to, um, if they'd like to reach out to legal counsel, we'll just, I can get them the uh, the use of legal counsel request form. And uh, they can reach out directly, um, or I could reach out to Amy and say, hey, we're going to be contacting you again about this.
Yeah, again, I don't know what they're going to do about it, I don't think that there's an earthworks meeting that's scheduled. But I know during the meeting, it came up several times about, oh, no, it's this amount, oh, no, it's this amount, well, we changed it, so. Yeah, I just don't want anybody to come back and say, well, the town said I could, you said I can, or town said I can't, you said I could, so. Would prefer to uh, avoid that.
So Margaret, you may want to reach out to Amy, because Amy may have already put something in draft.
Okay.
And just check with her on that first, and if she has, for, if she has, she, you know, could maybe run it by the earthworks or something.
Okay.
So I I don't know if that's a possibility or not, but it's worth checking.
I will check with Amy then, all right, so um, and then the hearing on this will be April twenty-sixth at seven thirty. So we'll contact the applicant tomorrow.
Okay. Uh, the next thing on the agenda was the library trustee.
Yes, and Beth Christensen is here, and I I would like to, I I feel I need to, to speak to this. So um, Jean Mitchell, Library Trustee, submitted her resignation uh, from the Board Library Trustees effective. This will be effective March twenty-fifth, her last day as a trustee will be March twenty-fourth. So we haven't hit the resignation date yet, so, um, so for Beth's information, and I know she's in the audience. Um, I just want to explain that we have to hold up, hold this tonight, we can't, the board is not going to be able to do the appointment tonight. Not only because Jean's um, resignation is not effective yet, but also the state statute governs. How a point, how vacancies are filled by appointment. Um, and it requires a joint meeting of the remaining members of the trustees and the members of the board in order to do that. So my hope um, is that we'll get a, the the Select Board will receive a notice from the remaining library trustees. Uh, by next, before next Monday night, and that the board may be able to meet with the trustees next Monday night to fill the vacancy. Um, the other requirement in the statute was that the vacancy be posted for a minimum of one week. So I spoke with Bob Hodge this morning, he did post it on the library's webpage. Uh, we'll share it on our webpage too, but it will meet the posting requirement. So I just want to be clear, we we just kind of have to take this in steps. Um, also, the assessors uh, may also be ready to meet with the board by next Monday night. To fill that vacancy on that elected board as well.
Okay, and we got two appointments that we probably need to schedule for next Monday. Okay, um, and do you want to speak to the twenty-three Linden?
Yes, yes, and I'd like the boards, I'd like the board's feedback on this. So uh, we received five bids uh, by Friday morning at ten o'clock, um, I did the public bid opening. Uh, the bids ranged from a little over a hundred thirty thousand to two hundred and forty-five thousand. Um. The low bid, I I was able to review, um, so what we do is in the public bid opening, we open the bids, and that's all we do, we read the bids aloud. And then it's after that, that I I have to scrub, you know, the bid, the contents of the bid packet. Um, in doing that, I found that the. In doing that, I found that the low bidder did not include one of the required pieces of documentation, and that is a comprehensive list of references showing three years' experience with municipal contracts. And that's important to us because we want to be sure, number one, that the contractor has performed municipal projects, and two, that they're familiar with municipal procurement, because it's a different animal than private procurement. So that requirement was made clear in three different sections of the IFB, but yet the list was not included. I reached out to the attorney general's office today to see if they might provide some guidance to me. I kind of sensed, I kind of had a feeling that I would be given the ability to either reject, reject the bid, or ask them for the list of references, which is what they told me. I have, you know, we have the ability to either require them to submit the list post bid opening, or we can, I can reject the bid. Rejecting the bid would mean that we'd have to move to the second lowest bid, which was $148,761.25. Having them submit the list of references, which was a requirement, again, would mean that there's going to be, you know, there'll be a minor delay in getting this all taken care of, because we're going to have to check all those references. And then in the end, if they, if a list of references isn't sufficient, we're going to be going with the second lowest bidder, and we'd have to go with the second lowest bidder anyway. So I'd like the board's thoughts on, on how you'd like me to proceed, because nothing's, nothing's easy and straightforward. This is one of those little glitches that we just need to make a decision on. If we, if we reject, we pay an additional $18,000 for the project, still significant savings from what the town budgeted.
Did the, the person who submitted the second lowest, everything's intact?
Everything is intact, because I had to scrub that one too, once I found out that the list of references was not included in the lowest bid.
Well, here's my feeling, is that if you're bidding on a job and you put out that there's certain requirements, and you've listed it multiple times, and you've chosen to ignore the one, two, three, then I'm, I'm sorry. I really don't want to bother. Personally, I don't want to go with the first one. I'd rather go with the second one.
For, for, for different reasons, I come to the same conclusion. When I regulate contract and try to sell stuff at my, or buy stuff for my agency at work, I think you get your best customer service before you sign the contract and start giving them money. And if at the very beginning there are problems, sometimes that is a foreshadowing of what might happen, because attention to details, what we want done when the project is done, you know, and so I feel bad, but, but I think we also go with the second bid.
And I would agree. I, I think that if they can't cross their Ts and dot their Is on this, then what about the work that will be performed?
Okay, okay. I appreciate that feedback, because again, we had, we had a choice. And I'm going to, you know, I'm required as the, as the chief procurement officer to notify the low bidder that the bid is rejected and the reasons why. So I appreciate the feedback.
Okay. We are moving on then to board questions and comments and liaison updates. I'll just say that I, the date by which to send your evaluation to me is Friday. So if you could get your evaluations to me by then, that would be great. And I have received one evaluation from a department head, which I will forward to you. And also, Peg, I didn't want you to, I wanted you to know that we didn't forget. Margaret and I talked about the Mabel Felton Marble Scholarship.
Yes. When does it due?
Well, you know, it's been different over the last few years. I happened to look up the emails today from the last couple of years, and I think last year it was June. But then, of course, we were dealing with COVID, and we still are. But the year before that, I think it was May. The, the date was something like May, May 1st or something like that. So I didn't see any of the information on what needs to be posted or anything, but, because I know Mary dealt with all of that. But, you know, I don't know, we probably need to figure it out, and.
I can tell you, I can tell you, June was able to provide me the current balance in that scholarship fund, and the current balance is $2,229.59. So despite the fact that we have not received a donation this year, these funds are available to provide scholarships.
And, and you know, I'm not sure whether Mary in the past has sent an email to Judith Kerr and Sylvia Marble, and just indicated that it's that time of the year again, and did you want to, but, but, you know, because we always felt as though we needed to wait to see whether they were going to donate.
Yeah.
And in the past few years, we've given out, you know, a substantial chunk of change to the students. I think it was, I think there was like $3,000 and maybe three, three girls, and so they each got a thousand, or two girls, and they got 1,500. So I don't know, we, we do need to probably put it on the agenda or, and take a vote to either spend the money that's there, or if there is a record of any kind of Mary reaching out to Judith and Sylvia, then maybe take a look at the email that she sent to see whether we should be doing that again.
All right, so I know that we don't have anything written in stone, but maybe target graduations are usually what, the beginning of June, if all goes according to schedule? So what, you're looking at mid-May-ish to have submissions back to us, submissions in whatever form that is?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, we, we used to like to have someone, like one of the board members, go to graduations.
Yeah, I did. I cried. Did you? I did. Well, it had been, I graduated to Honto in 1980. It was really the first time that I had been back. So, you know, brand new school, I got a little, little emotional. I went my way through it. But you know what? I handed out the money and the people were grateful, so.
Exactly.
I'll try not to cry again.
But that's, I mean, last year, I think because of COVID, we didn't get it done before graduation. So that it was, we would vote, we would vote the money to the students.
Yes.
Like the week before graduation or something.
Right.
And then, you know, one of us would go to graduation and give out the, the award.
Okay.
June informs me that it was in 20, January 2020, the scholarship was given. There was, oh, okay. Okay, so a check was received in May 2020 for $3,000. And in January 2020, the scholarship was given because it requires the semester, the first semester grades.
Right, right. So I think we just gave out one to last year's recipient.
Yeah, because I, yeah, I think last year, someone was late in getting theirs in, unfortunately. So that's why I want to make sure that word gets out to folks who might need it. Okay.
Right.
All right, so we'll target mid-May-ish, but more coming. Okay, thanks.
Well, we have to get the information out to the schools and everything, so that kids can apply.
Okay.
The, the information goes to the guidance counselors at both schools, Assabette and Tohoto. Okay. That's all I had. Anybody else?
I always have some, but I'll let Scott go.
Margaret, where are we with school board elections? Like, why are the school?
School board election?
Yeah, they're, they're, they're not on the May 24th list, it looks like.
Because the legis, the legislation has not made it through, has not made it through the legislature. Eloise and I were just talking about this before the meeting tonight. I can, I will check with Meg and John to see if they have any updates on this.
Should we possibly?
Is the state going to pay the extra cost? It's going to hate to have a special election sometime this summer? Because having another election, Eloise has to have extra hours for voter registration. We have to have people at the polls. You know, there is a lot of effort that has to go into the state telling us we can't have the election when we have all of our other elections.
Yeah, it's, it's true. You're, you're right. That's not the only way to resolve this temporarily. It could be resolved, you know, another way to temporarily resolve this is to do appointments until, until the next, until the next election. So appoint to fill vacancies until the next election, so.
Do they just appoint themselves? Who appoints them?
Could Berlin run an advisory election that has not binding, that might inform who to appoint if there happened to be resignations?
Oh my gosh, these are all questions for the school district. I can pass them along.
I know, I just, it, it is one of my tirades, the, the state having an opinion and being able to tell us we can't, we can't elect our own elected officials at the election. I could get why they, they have some say in whether or not we're allowed to put them on the state ballot in November, and bomb that they chose, that even though we were a little late, you know, chose not to, to do that. But that this is, this ballot is the town of Berlin, a town of Boylston ballots, and they're telling us that we can't have an election for positions that affect only our towns.
It's non-action at the state. It's non-action on the legislation that's preventing it.
Right, right. The fact that the state legislator has to get involved on when the town of Berlin can hold the town of Berlin's school board elections.
Yeah.
I just, I, it's just weird that the state legislator, because the representative from Pittsfield, I'm sure cares the least about when the town of Berlin holds our school board elections.
Well. And, and it's, there's no chance that this is gonna, you know, the legislation's gonna pass before our town meeting? Should we have put an article on there and just passed over it?
For, for.
This is the election.
Oh, I'm sorry. What am I thinking? Yeah.
Yeah, this is, you know, this is really kind of a mess. And, you know, I'll do what I can to pass along questions and comments from the board to Meg, John, and the school district. The bottom line is, we cannot, we cannot deviate from the regional agreement without legislation allowing us to do it. That's it. So.
I know.
And so if the legislator never passes, we just never can have a school board election?
Well, you'd have a school board election, but it wouldn't be until the 2022 general election. State of November 2022 is when the next one will be. Because that's what the regional agreement provides for, is school district, school committee elections at the biennial state election. I, frankly, and I'm just going to, I'm just putting that out there, I think that in the future, if this is resolved, that it might be worth looking at maybe changing to the school committee elections to, to mesh up with the annual town elections in the future.
Yes.
I think there, I think there was pressure at the time, the state wants not to have all these town elections in odd times, and wants it all on the, want to have one election day a year in November, but we're now split. That's the only one that's then, and the rest of them are in May, so.
It doesn't take care of that. That doesn't take, take care of the now situation, I understand. I'll, I'll reach out to the legislators.
I think there was some kind of a, a reason that the school's attorney said that it had to be this way, but I can't remember what it was when I was on the regionalization subcommittee.
Eloise's, Eloise's hand is up on this.
Okay.
Okay. All right, all right, Eloise.
There are five or six different ways that you can vote to make sure you have one man, one vote. And that was the, the vote that the school committee took to have residency requirements. That was, that was a choice that the school committee gave
Yep.
to their council at that time. It seemed like a fairly good thing. Maybe we can ask if we can put it on as a non-binding question. Who would you want for this school committee?
Right.
Throw out names. Okay, that's my humor for tonight.
Thanks, thanks.
Okay.
I think I've, I've done. You can go, Peg.
All right. Coffee talk. We had originally scheduled it for a date that Energy stole it from you. So we had it on what, the 15th of April? So given that town meeting is sliding until 15th of May, when do we want to do coffee talk?
We can't do it then?
Do it when?
The 15th.
I won't be available. I'll be at Energy.
Really?
What if Energy Committee could move up one week? Because now that we're dealing with one consultant, you might have the proposal well ahead of the 15th.
Is that a guarantee?
We could, could we push ours off a week?
To the 20, going to the 29th? We should two weeks?
Margaret, you're doing, you're doing the, not the coffee talk, I'm thinking of the other thing. So, yeah.
Which can, yeah.
You're, you're going over the, yeah, I was thinking pre-town meeting forum too. Yeah, no.
That would be the following week.
Right.
What, the 22nd?
The week of the 26th, I think, the pre-town meeting.
Oh, okay.
Budget forum. So, so Peg, you're suggesting the 22nd, Ben?
Of April.
The 22nd?
Yeah, I mean, is that
Sure.
far enough, close enough to the election, to the town meeting? That's what, one, yeah, two weeks?
Because, again, and, and maybe that's our goal, is to make sure that we try to make sure people have the town
Stuff in hand.
report in hand for that day. I don't expect them to get it much ahead of time, but I, and then maybe, Margaret, if, maybe next week, we could get our, an update on sort of where we are with the town report, because we will have had a budget done by then. We'll finish our articles at that point. I think we should be getting close to being able to say it's, it's getting ready to go to printers.
Yep, we can do an update next week.
So we're doing coffee talk on the 22nd, am I correct? Okay.
All right.
Moving it on the calendar.
Another item that I had, we had talked about it last week, Margaret, the $100,000 that Senator Tran, at the time, was able to secure funding for the courts and the snack shack. So I reached out to Meg and John and got, hey, we'll get back to you. So that was literally that night, I had emailed them after our meeting. So I'm going to give it about another week, and then I'm going to nag them again and find out, because that shouldn't be too hard to find, so.
When I contact them about the school, the school legislation, I'll ask them about that too.
Yeah, gentle, gentle reminder that Peg's on her way, because she hasn't heard from you. And around that, you had also suggested, or Julie had asked, if they, she thought there would be any issues with the Board of Health, either Berlin Board of Health or Nishoba, in opening the snack shack. I hadn't heard from them. I've reached out again to them, them being Berlin Board of Health. So I will reach out to them one more time and ask for their input.
When, when is recreation starting, the, the athletics down there at the field?
I don't know. I mean, I've seen, well, I've seen signs to register for baseball and softball. So I'm assuming if those signs are out, then it's got to be soon. It's got to be quick.
Well, it may not start soon or quick. They just want to get people registered.
Correct. But, you know, in fairness to recreation, they still need to get their other two members signed in. They need to start meeting again. They need to start planning again. So I'm sure part of their planning will be, hey, can we open the snack shack? Hey, can we man the snack shack? Hey, what can we sell at the snack shack? So, you know, to be fair to them, want to give them as much time. So I will reach out again to the Berlin Board of Health and ask them, because I asked them, I said, you know, do we need to talk to you and/or Nishoba? So I just want to get, get an answer. It could just be yes. I mean, food trucks are open. We went to a food truck over the weekend. So I'm sure if food car, food trucks can sell food, then our snack shack minus the water can sell prepackaged food. Okay, that was it.
Oh, okay.
Like, I could make up more. Like, I could make up more.
Well, so could I, but.
No, I'm good.
I'm, yeah, I'm ready to take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Keith, I.
Stone, I.
Hawkins, I.